Let's start that with a word of prayer and turn it right over to you to make the presentation.
It's my pleasure.
Just go to the Lord in prayer. Father God, once again, we did come before you wonderful, full of praise and glory as we do every day. The three things in our mind especially all the time. Number one, giving you praise and thanksgiving for all of the merciful blessings encompassed in life given each and every one of us. Number two, we always pray for admission of our sins because we do make mistakes. We do err, we do sin. When the apple was dipped, sin began. And Father God, we just pray for forgiveness for our sins. And thirdly, Father God, I do pray for others, always pray for the sick, the distressed, the oppressed. We all have needs. And Father God, there are so many varying levels of needs. Some people are really, really, really more needful than others. And Father God, you're the great position, the great hill, the great camp store. And you are the one who walks the trails with us, the pathways with us, the journeys with us. And you are the one, you are the one who provides the remedies to our needs. And we thank you so much for that. Now, Father God, I do pray to be with us today. This is a difficult task, is an important task. It's a task that has been prepared. We have been presented a balanced budget with no tax increase for the citizens of this county. I thank you for that. Just be willing to lead God direct us and have us to make the decisions that's in the best interest for our county. Father God, these things I now do pray in your name, the name of your precious son, Jesus Christ, our risen Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thank you. Chief C can join us around 10, is what he is calling. Okay, so I was going to start off today just reviewing our message, our budget message. Okay? And if you get any questions, it's just a high overview of what the, I guess, the meat of the budget is. But the tax rate remains the same, okay? Seven eight six. There is an introduction of an EMS tax, and that is for EMS only. It can only be used for that function. This is to offset an increase in the service. It's getting more expensive. The increase in stations were going to be at four. And the new level, which is a paramedic. So it's a very justified addition, and it follows suit with the counties around us. I was speaking to the Pitt County manager, and theirs is increasing.
They ordered it, what, they ordered it four.
Well, they're at six, 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 point five eight, I believe. Point on five eight. We see an increase in the estimated valuation with a wonderful tax collection rate. There are four new positions budgeted, and they are all in DSS, and they are to support the Medicaid expansion. Okay? Five percent COLA is included in the budget. The COLA, we usually say, is to combat inflation. CPI this year is four point nine, so it's just a bit higher. I would say the commissioners have done very well in the past in increasing employee and staff's pay with COLAs. Let's see. Funding for North Community College, the request remained the same. Funding for Green County schools increased just a little over 10%. They asked for an increase. It had been, I believe, three or four years since the last increase. This is in the balanced budget. And the new regional library asked for a 3% increase.
Did I say we'll do a 3% increase?
They gave a budget, if you'd like to review if we can.
Sometime.
Okay, we'll pull it right out. Let me jump to it for you, Jerry. So she writes, "To Mr. DeHaven, in close to find the Green County Public Library's proposed budget and funding request for 2324. The request is for a 3% increase in allotment of funds from Green County government for a total of 143,685." "Due to increases in operating costs, low hourly salary rates, and inflation." They're hoping to increase staff pay and other stuff. So the actual budget is... They've been very good partners, and they haven't asked for an increase in many, many years, so.
My hearing is not good.
Everything goes up just a little bit, but... So, and nine, the budget continues the initiative to bring all vehicles into the A3 replacement plan. There are 11 total purchases. Most are with county funds, some are with federal funds. Four for the sheriff, communications, health, DSS. Two in water, one in landfill, and one in transportation. Okay? We are really pushing the initiative for participation from local fire departments in the first responder program. $15,000 is budgeted for six departments. In the past, we had done three, I believe, but only one participated. It was rough, okay? This budget contains fees, dues, to be part of the whole transparic economic development region. The budget, not our operations, but a capital project budget includes EMS station three, to which we just received bids on Friday. We'll work those bids out, hopefully have something to recommend for your approval Monday the 5th. There's an increase, a recommended increase in water rates. Water rates have not been increased in five years. We had been doing it consistently every two or three years to combat the increase in cost of doing business. COVID slowed that, a more cautious approach. I had a flat increase in water and asked for a recommendation from the engineers, and they went with a heavier increase on commercial industrial, which is the prisons, and lower for residential. There's also a recommendation for sewer increase, and that had not been increased in three years. We received an increase from Farmville for House of Bulk Sewer, and that increase is being passed along. There's an increase, a recommended increase in solid waste. $5 on the availability fee, $5 on the user fee. And that is the cost of doing business. It was funny, I was speaking with the Pitt County manager, and they had been at $120 per person with similar fee structure. You know, ours was, before last year, ours was, what, $75? Now it's 90? This increase of 10 will make it 100. What makes us think that we can operate this enterprise cheaper than they can operate theirs? Just, it's not, it's not sustainable. And then actually, she said they're raising theirs to 130. So it is just, the increases are all around, and we have to pass those on. And then according to the chief economist from state budget management, a decline in consumer spending is forecasted over the next biennium, but an increase in investment earnings is forecasted due to the Fed's increase in interest rates. So you will see that those two forecasts, which affect us, are reflected in the budget. I'll explain those when we get to those places. It's my opinion, this is, it continues our conservative fiscal model and approach to budget. Are there questions in the, in the message?
Sounds good.
Wonderful. Okay, so you got your books, open it up. So what you have is your general fund revenues, okay? 11, 100 is tax, okay? You'll see there's an increase in the adware tax, which is a reflection of the work that's being done in our economic development department. It's also a reflection of our tax collection, our entire tax department. Tax collections remain very, very high, we're very proud of that. Are there questions in adware tax? Okay? Next, you are going to see sales taxes. If you remember from the budget message, Office State Budget Management just said there's going to be a decline in consumer spending. And that decline has caused me to reduce the sales tax 2% from current fiscal year's revenues.
What were you gonna ask here?
Last year was an even. Last year, I had no increase. I think they recommended increase, and I didn't do it to stay conservative. And there are some smaller taxes, the excise stamp, which is a result of registered deeds. Widow's privilege license, cable TV franchise utility, and then cable transfer. That's a product of Jeremy Rich and his company's name is Infineon. Are there questions in sales? So now we go to our MISC expenses. All of these are... If the sheriff is having more people housed in jail for different reasons, you'll see an increase in that projection. If he's selling more permits for guns and pistol purchases, and whatever that stuff's really called, you'll see an increase there to model the trend. If it's becoming the trend, we're gonna, we're gonna budget for it that way.
It's gotta level out sometimes.
Anyways, a- as you look through there, do you have any questions? Is there anything I can answer for you in more detail?
Do you have, do you have one little question? Are we housing Wayne County people?
No.
Okay. I know they're planning on building a new.
They're building a facility, they're taking, they're adding, they're building a new facility, but they're shutting down one.
Okay.
So the jail, the courthouse is going to be shut down. And they're going to take and move those folks out to all one central location in Wheaton Street.
They'll have another impact on this because we're not, we're not housing them in here. Okay, that was, that was my question.
Okay, if there's no questions, we can move down to 160, which is program revenues. You can see the various revenues. Please take a look, I'm interested in questions.
Is everybody pretty well stated in their budget?
On the expenditure side, yes. The last paragraph in the message, which I didn't read, I'll read to you. "The proposed budget continues a path of conservative progress for Green County. The county continues to see the return on its investments, both tangible and intangible. The commissioner should be recognized for progressive thinking and leadership. Department heads should be equally recognized for putting the vision of the county commissioners into advantage outputs." Really, only one budget was cut, and it's all very explainable. Are there questions on any revenues? Once you get into the 11, 170s, it starts to become senior center. 171 is DSS, 172 is public health. They are pro, they are fund program revenues. Those numbers are received from those...
State.
What, from those departments. However, they obtain them. So as we have built the revenues, we know what we can spend, and we know what those revenues can offset, what they can support. And that takes us into 11, 411. I'll bring that page. So we have board salaries, travel, applicable taxes. You have your audit fees. Try to explain what all of these expenses, these specific line items are. Are there questions, are there acronyms that need explanation, anything? Okay, we can move to 11, 412. The same, we have one retiree that is covered there. Names need not be mentioned. This particular department holds your general funds property liability and workers' comp insurance. So what you'll see in the beginning of the next year is, those are going to be due in July, August. So that department's going to be at 90% at that time. It does not mean that it's going to go over, it just means that it's front loaded with a heavy expenditure that takes up a very large portion of the entire budget, just for future reference, okay? Are there questions? This also holds the appropriations for nonprofits. We do have a form, it was not as popular as once thought it could be, but it does have an, what we do have is appropriation for the Arts and Historical Society or Museum, and that's 3,500, it's always been 3,500. And then there's 10,000, 5,000's for the Manufacturers Association, 3,500 for the Green Pregnancy Center, they submitted. And then I believe 1,500 for the North Community College Foundation. I put those all in there. It is your discretion if you let them to stay or let them go. Okay, we'll move on. We move into, comment?
Sound good.
Oh, wonderful. We move into administration. We cover salaries for staff in administration, finance, and HR. We just looked through there, please ask questions. If you see something, I'd be glad to explain it in as much, or a little detail as you desire.
Lumens, is it? Black sole?
Lumens, essentially. Yes.
Lumens is all the way up. Which one?
Lumens was...
It's century lamp.
Yeah.
It's century lamp.
Century lamp with lumens.
We use lumens for phones, our VoIP phones.
What about, is it black sole?
Red speed.
Speed, black speed, yeah.
Red speed is lumens, is century lamp. They're all one company with different, under different shells. The phones are a little bit more expensive than in the past because people, people seem to like...
If you like, add some air, some...
Okay, if there are any questions, we'll move to tax. Number 11, 416. Tax. So I believe you have the second page of tax there, that you're looking at. The first page is the next page. So you're gonna have your revaluation, which is, we put in 50,000 a year for the next rebound. And then you're gonna have your salaries and benefits. And then Stephanie does a phenomenal job in detailing the expenses of the department. So if you've not read through those, ask questions. Tell me your thoughts. There are no questions in tax, we can move to 11, 417. 11, 417 is...
Question on which postage?
Yes?
They're all over the place.
Yeah.
They keep going, we're locking at a rate and...
So our postage is through Pitney Bowes. Postage is postage. The machines change, the cost of those machines change, the cost of maintenance of those machines change. It is a continuous battle. Uh, Pitney Bowes is a, is monopoly the right word? There's no real competition for bulk mailing.
Going through Pitney Bowes, we get our postage, like when the USPS raises their rates for a regular everyday stamp, we get it approximately three to five cents cheaper than what you would pay for at the post office. And they've been raising their rates every, it seems like every six months.
So that is part of it, that discount comes at a cost, trust me. And we do a lot of volume mailing, so it will continue to go up. Okay.
Next one's corp?
The next one's corp. Corp generally remains the same. They're getting the supply item, the utilities item is generally left at 7,000. One of our end of year budget transfers is to use that money for utility costs at that facility, probably could be reevaluated, we left it the same. And then this year is a jury forming, jury forming selection year, so you'll notice an increase there. Now, we've done a lot of work in the courtroom in our facility that they use, and based on revenues and how the, how the revenues come in for the next year, I anticipate that we will do more work there because there is more work to be done to keep it updated and to improve it, to improve it like we would all want our courtroom to be representative of. Okay?
The elections next.
Yes.
That's 418.
418 elections. Josh, Josh gave a very nice budget. Please read through his explanations. If there are any questions, we'll get you an answer.
They just covered by the state, if they're pulling by, the board members, their salaries, we pay their salary.
Seems to be a good budget to me. Okay, we move on, 419 is the register. And this is her request. Move on to planning zone of building inspections, 420. They do a nice job on explaining their requests. No questions, 421 is animal control. We staffed the salaries, I'm sorry, budgeted the staff and salaries and benefits. And then a lot of it's trend is there's an uptick in animals and the need for care for animal welfare. Its cost increases too. You know, funny story, when I initially came to Green County, you know, all those years ago, the, I don't say the animal control budget was under $100,000. So...
They tied it, you sure they tied it?
No, I came right after, actually, when I came, they were just, having been being released from the hospital, hell.
Yeah.
So yeah, they've always been under administration.
I complain if anyone's got a goat.
Sounds delicious.
And water burger? I heard it, well, you can eat a heart burger. If an animal is destroying, destroying your crop, I think you better like put it down. Give it their first opportunity.
Well, it's, it's a first opportunity.
Yeah, good meal, I heard.
Good meal, yeah.
You guys have a question for us along?
Okay.
Instead of rare supplies and happy jack vouchers, I thought happy jack discontinued the voucher.
As I look through our expenses, that is one of the larger expenses for supplies for animal control. I'm not familiar with that.
They go with, a happy jack voucher goes with all adopted animals if they're not spayed or neutered.
I'm not familiar with them stopping that service.
I was told happy jack discontinued the...
Yeah, I think it's been discontinued. Need to check on it, I think it has.
Will you make note of that? Okay, we'll continue. I hope they have discontinued because that will only make that a more costly service.
More expensive.
Okay. So we get to 431, the Honorable Sheriff. Now, he chose to give explanation on a separate sheet of paper, which I'm gonna put on the screen. Just give me a minute. Does everyone have a drink, coffee, water?
There's...
Mr. Sheriff explained his expenditures as such. From my review, it looked like they were in line with previous year and current year's expenditures, followed the current business model of being conservative, and very pleased with the budget submitted. You want to add anything, Mr. Sheriff?
I think good, I thought I explained all that.
Wonderful.
If there's any questions on it, I'd be glad to take them.
Maybe if you work on your video, right, servicing.
Service. I, I spread it out throughout, evenly throughout the channel.
Oh, that's fine, do they all charge the same price?
No, they don't, they always charge the same price. If the county would like to look into getting the county maintenance for all of it, it would always be the same price then, that would be a good thing, I think, so. I can't, I can't put it where everybody, certain ones have different needs wherever their place is, but evenly spread out, but majority of them are around the same. Certain work does, certain folks on different things based off of whether, which could be two places they would do tire business with. Different ones don't want to do any major mechanic work. Different ones can be just be buried out, might have been in that.
Other counties, do they use the main school maintenance?
No.
No. They just made their...
They, they, they either got their own maintenance, the county's got its own maintenance shop that tends to open up, right, and Johnson County, Johnson County... Johnson County actually has their own maintenance shop that uh, takes and does all the oil, brakes and tires. Anything made or then they carry it to the dealership or to another place, typically the dealership, a lot of times it's still under warranty.
Yeah.
Uh, but you know, they, they call it that way, it's all centralized. As for what he does it for. It started out, he done, he took a deputy position, he had plenty of deputy positions, he took a deputy position and made it into a maintenance. And took a, a tax forward for tremendous ahead and bottom building there and started that out. So, and then, then animal control and different, other different entities started going over there and so it actually worked around that way with them. Now, some of the other facility or some of the other sheriff's offices, they, they can farm theirs out just like I do. For on the general price, I don't know if they've got it on the bidding process or whatever.
Well, we buy new vehicle, it's under warranty, what do we care?
Um, dealership, yes, the dealer that they purchase from. All state contract vehicles are not purchased from the same dealership. Different dealership.
If this warranty work, then it's got to get to the dealership. Now, regular maintenance, oil, gas, tires, or you know, brakes, all that things, you know. Level of facility. If you, but I actually done a reduction on that because our fleet's newer, or what our.
Yeah.
Cost is on that, so that's why we reduced some of that because we got a newer fleet than what we had in the past.
Now, Matt has the largest fleet of the departments, so if you're hearing from him that the fleet is newer. And it's been turned over and we're trying to maintain that EE replacement plan, that's a good thing, just, you know, little sidebar information.
Of course, I know everybody gets that in the mail about extended warranties on the vehicle.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a good option.
Well, who asked you?
Extended warranty sounds good, but just like with most vehicles.
It's got a lot of flying on it.
A lot of enforcement vehicles are a little bit different, they run a little bit longer, they go, they make, they're stopping, you go when there's different stuff on it, I don't really particularly think. Setting that over, plus you resell value on there, if you ask my goal to have more, we can take and turn these in at a lower mileage, get a better cost back. Or turn it back in and then keep rolling that pot around so that way we can keep fleet up.
That's right, the higher resale will go right back into reinvestment for the new vehicle. Are there questions in his budget? I continue to scroll down.
Just a little comment, we did have a rotation for purchases twenty years ago, eighteen years ago, whatever. But then when we had our financial difficulties, ten, eleven, twelve years ago, whatever. But we got out of that rotation, it's good to get back to the.
Absolutely.
Things evolve.
That's right.
Roll with the wheels today, it's gonna lower your maintenance cost on your vehicle. The dividend is, I've got it lowers your maintenance cost because oil changes a lot better than motor chains.
Absolutely.
Oil change is around a hundred bucks, a motor change is around five grand, so. Had to do that last year to just, I mean, that was based off the fact that, that we just weren't producing enough people. So we had to make a little jump out of it.
Any questions in the sheriff's budget? We can move on to the jail budget. I'll have to take note that the, there are loan payments in this budget. And they are up, updated to our current amortization schedule. Um, did you keep your explanation for jail in the same one?
Yes.
But it is not a whole lot different than prior year, other than adjustment of salaries, um, debt service, et cetera.
Did add a little bit into for some of the maintenance stuff, there are some maintenance issues on some different planes that are needing to be. That they don't, we're also gonna be looking at getting a new jail meal ban. Um, which we get extended use out of those, they go well over. Um, but. Jail meal bans are running three rounds a day at least. So, uh, which is still cheaper than a dietitian.
But, did you have that in there new?
Should put in capital, I'll play, I'll play it up later on then.
Okay.
How many years do we finance this year for, crush me?
Forty.
Forty. Just when we suffered a head some problem.
Wee chair wheelchair.
It's gotta be quick.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, uh-uh.
That's what I meant.
Now, I mean, it's, I, for the big deals, here I make that, there, you're hauling meals that are in various states. Uh, you know, carrying there, they clean them out and everything else, but a lot of times inevitably they wind up it's still, especially on a return trip. When they're taking a train back. Uh, things get sloshed around a little bit, so once that stack keeps digging clean, but um, looking to use it along that.
Who we cater with meals?
With jail, we're doing prisons.
It's prison, okay.
We've been with them ever since we switched over to your new facility. I say new, it's lived twelve years old now, flipping in two thousand eleven.
Do you give them more?
Free, yeah, not in my correction, eastern.
Eastern?
Yeah. Which was great prisons in our county, only one's got more prisons than us in Lake County, and they got four, so. Yeah, most in, second most in the state.
Again, good budget. No changes. Any questions? Okay, we move on to emergency management, emergency services.
Four forty one.
Four forty one. Past the salaries and benefits, Brock does a nice job of. Explaining the requests.
Oh, watch it. I don't know what it flood mitigation grant.
Yes, that was the. What's the line number, because I don't think I have it on mine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the third of their flood.
Five eighteen one two.
Right, stream gauges.
That's the string, that's what I was thinking, we got two of those.
Three of three, yeah.
Hook it in, so they will.
Um, so we have two currently, but we installed three. Um, one on fifty eight at the Wilson County line, one on Shepherd Square Bridge, and then one on Space Bridge, by, by rank.
Now, who would these maintained by?
These would be maintained by the state's governor or commander.
I got a tree to tell me the same thing.
Any other questions in emergency management? Move on to EMS, this is a large department. Also reasonably good um, explanations. I will say that in the capital outlay, we have budgeted for. Uh, we will receive four power load stretchers on lease and will pay for them over four years at the cost of one power load stretcher benefit. All upfront, over time, so. If you recall in the financial reporting, this will be added to the new B S V ninety seven for lease reporting. So if you don't remember, don't worry, we will.
Can you truck it? How much longer is this one?
How long for those are truck ads?
We ordered it in October, I think so, it was twenty four to thirty months at that point.
Twenty four to thirty months.
Up to next year, it's not.
Yeah, next year.
When do we anticipate the uh, completion of the EMS satellite facility in Maricopa?
Okay. We received our bids.
Right.
This past Friday the nineteenth. Hopefully we'll have recommendation for you to approve the vendor, the contractor. And it depends on the vendor contractor's timeline of working this into their schedule. I hope it can be done before Christmas, but I'm not gonna say that that can happen this fiscal year. I don't think that there should be any question, it can be finished in the, in the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year.
Facility finished before we get this new EMS vehicle they were talking about.
Yes.
So we did have to say spare back that, that we can.
We did.
Put into service.
Yes.
That was kind of where I was going with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's try talk about thirty, twenty four to thirty months.
Yep.
To get the vehicle.
We have a plan in place for our emergency services vehicles.
Sounds great, sounds good.
Where are we at on the uh, property line? Where are we gonna do?
So I believe that um, Mr. Henry Smith has, is in the process of quit claiming uh, property. Near those fence lines, all of the adjoining property owners have worked out with us prior to your um, abandonment of streets. The details of that, so it's making this process quicker, um, faster. And I'm assuming, I'm trying to plan for the demolition and the trees to be down, the stumps to be out. The new property lines to be drawn and the um, awarding of bid to the contractor. To all take place in the same window of time, and right now that is working, it's a lot to keep a, a handle on, but it's working. It's kind of been a slow process, uh, a little disappointed in that, but we've all learned something. Yes, sir. Other questions? Medical director.
Contractors.
Yeah. Medical director, yeah, medical directors fee is the same and EMS billing, I believe, is six percent of, six and a half percent of fee collected. We think that will be enough to cover.
Start K.
K shift?
K.
Mm-hmm. K, so we move on to communications.
Dispatch.
Yes, dispatch. If you recall, this was a new department a couple of years ago. Um, we are working through, excuse me, working through um, the new department, identifying the actual costs. Making sure that they have the resources needed to operate that department um, at a level we would appreciate, they continue to get better, there's still room for improvement. So. Are there questions?
Do you have a more second reason?
That is going to replace a white GMC something, GMC Trailblazer. We're trying to get it out of the fleet.
Now, this is nine one one communication, right? I'd like to know in the last six months, how many times has she been called back when she's had to come back and drive a camera to you?
I can pull it, I can't give it to you off the cuff, but I can pull it.
Anytime, I don't wanna.
If you would, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Little sidebar about nine one one. Recently, I think it was April twenty eighth, we hosted the nine one one board in the new B S C facility. Um, had a nice meeting, there's a lot of those people, I didn't realize that there were so many on the nine one one board. Um, we met with Secretary Stevens and David Bone, who's our East Carolina Council of Government Executive Director, is a representative on that board. Um, and Poki and uh, others, Angie. And they had a very nice meeting, couple hours in the facility, um, they're very proud of that facility, and they also told us they would be back, is that true?
Yes.
So. Very proud of that facility, they're very proud of that, uh, they're invested in that facility, so just wanted to relay that to. Questions on communications?
And they're coming about that being part of that facility, they're special, that was the nine one one funds that we got that assisted in renovating that facility.
That piece, yes, sir.
That piece, I believe.
That's right. That's right, we can all be proud of that. Now, how long we gonna have this? Does anyone need to go to the restroom or, or we gonna keep going?
Keep rolling.
Okay, we go to four sixty one public buildings. I tried to include in as much detail as possible what this fund pays for. I will say there's a lot of changes that take place, if you see something, please let me know. Um, if, if you know of something that's not included, please let me know, um. We wanna make sure that we're budgeting as accurately for our buildings as possible to maintain them to the standard that we have now. We want the public to be proud of the facilities. If there are no questions, we'll move on.
They have contracts, yeah.
That's maintenance contracts, what they do is they are um. They're monitoring our cameras once a month. They, and that's all the cameras we have, we have quite a few now.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so that's included, and then they keep an eye on us if we have issue with the badging system galaxy. And they also, they command they'll change outer printer cartridge for that and stuff of that nature, so that we can continue to use and, use that system and its functionality.
Economic development.
Okay, move on to economic development. Not really a whole lot included in here, Trey did a nice job in including the different grants that we are involved in. Um, something you guys might not know is we are currently involved with eight economic development grants, is that correct? Um, in various stages, I believe there are three more that I can't tell you anymore about. That are coming online or you'll be hearing more about in this next fiscal year, not before. So very active in economic development. Um, I know that the, I know that the local manufacturers, the local community is very thankful for that action. Uh, being able to take advantage of something that is available to them that they may not have known of themselves.
Good job.
So we move on, uh, four ninety three. J C P C, now, so we are currently not housing the J C P C representative, the schools. We still take in the money and we pay it that way. We pay the school for these functions at that cost, and that goes and matches the request from Ms. Nancy Hodges. Uh, M C D P S. Okay, four ninety five is extension. Uh, you'll notice that four ninety five and five fourteen is Farmer's Market, five oh two is uh, ship. Ship. Five oh two is DJJP, um, so you'll see that the different budgets that that department.
That's not my likes, it's Mr. Jones's likes, I'm gonna do it, I'm not.
So.
I know.
What is going on there is.
He's staying in another place.
Mr. Jones, yeah, it's not on that page, but. We'll adjust it even when we get there, but very conservative budget. Uh, Jessica does a very nice job.
She already called first.
I don't believe they've hired.
They, soon, they should be on line soon, they've hired, they've.
They did hire her.
They hired a person.
Okay, so they have hired, but they're not here yet.
Okay.
Okay. Um, thank you, Trey. So four ninety six is soil water. So four ninety-six is soil and water. Sidebar on that, Rodney spoke to me Friday. We have been awarded another hundred and eight, hundred and ten thousand for more creek snagging. So we're getting that rolling. They'll pick up at the boat ramp and go, what's hooked at?
That's right.
Yes.
Has he been over here with his own, see where the commercial places are?
He has, yes. Rodney is very good at that. He was able to get the same company, Grillo Construction, from Louisiana, to honor the first part of that contract, so as.
Same per foot.
Same cost, yeah, same linear per foot contract. So that would be an addendum to the previous contract, so that the whole bidding process does not have to be repeated. So it's.
How many, I haven't, how far down the county go? Do you remember what it is per foot?
Four ninety-six, per, four ninety-six per linear foot, hundred and eight thousand dollars. What is that, four and a half miles?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There should be some more money, but I haven't sort of tried and get that yet.
Well, so, well, if you recall, we've gone from, I wanna say Spades Bridge.
No, it was two thousand feet of Shepherd's.
Shepherd's Ferry Bridge.
It was about, it was about no longer.
Yeah.
No, he, about your voice.
Shepherd's Ferry Bridge, not Spades Bridge. Shepherd's Ferry Bridge to the.
Boat ramp.
So that's, that's good. And just know that, I don't know before, but that stream, that creek has been cleaned twice in, what, eight years? Second time we've done it.
She always telling Wilson, trying to fix it, coming out black creek. Bring out black creek, that's where we need to continue to. I, I didn't get a map, so I would have seen how many trip there he really did out creek for Wilson.
Wherever you want.
Just one more you think. And everyone have got, everyone have got bigger than that.
We are part of the B map program.
Yeah.
Okay.
We advertise that in on the website, anything?
I'm, I'm not sure. I did receive correspondence from Don about, let's see, let me wake it up. If I'm not mistaken, correspondence about the B map. Are you doing that? Okay. I asked for a map, so that you guys could observe and see what's been done. And I don't think they provided a map. But it is a program that we are a part of, and from what I know, I hear good things, but I can't tell you.
That's something out here at the city, the person's in charge, he's putting out meetings and give us a definite date, next two times of the year.
Kathy, we take note of that, and we will be sure to ask for that. I think it's actually something we already asked for that we've not been, not received.
Right.
B map presentation from a state representative. Does anyone else need to use the restroom? Maybe we wanna take a two-minute break.
Yeah, just take a two-minute break.
I'll make a comment about that B map.
Yeah.
Twenty years ago, I guess it was, we had a discussion about the B map program. And there was a, a duck hunter in the audience and.
Well, he can walk a mile.
Oh, he was, he was, and she was telling him, because if you blew the vapor dams, then you got the water out of the swamp, and the ducks couldn't come in the swamp, and they couldn't hunt the ducks.
Sure.
And I said, lady, if you own land.
You the one.
You own land, about seventeen acres of, they was.
Five six.
Eleven.
Soil, water. Your idea of recreation, maybe go back a page. Maybe just a couple more.
Eleven four nine.
Remember that all revenue, interest revenue needs to be credited back to the funds from the department which, which made that revenue work. Okay, four ninety six. Soil and water. Are there any questions about that budget? Strike will be similar to years past if you remove the snagging. Again, we'll see snagging or creek snagging, stream cleaning, whatever you want to call it, included once those funds are appropriated formally from state.
That's acceptable experience.
Always will. Okay, so.
Veterans.
We go to the VA, I'm sorry, the veterans. No change in budget. From what I know, they are very pleased with their facilities, very pleased with everything going on over there. Ray and Claudia are just a pleasure to have. We go to the school, LCC and the library and. Schools are five oh four.
Schools.
Little County College is five oh five. Okay. So five oh seven is mental health. East Point asked for the same, if you recall, for a while we didn't participate and now we fully participate. Then we go to recreation. I did make slight changes in recreation. The total budget amount remained within, I think, a thousand bucks. I slid the money around to where I thought it was most appropriate and made the most business sense. Recall this is all about making business sense.
Come back to answer me, what the ball field, what the sentence on that?
I don't know, I didn't see.
Didn't turn nothing in.
I didn't see the budget request.
I've asked him twice. I made a worry because Kyle and we tried to what we could do. It has not been done as though three months ago.
Well, I think Harold even got on him, if you guys remember this guy Harold Thomas. He was here before Trey for right at two years. So this conversation's been going on for years and we have, we don't have a proposal. But I do believe that I think we can operate within these parameters in this department. We'll watch. Other questions?
Just a comment, we're not being recorded or anything.
Yeah, they are.
Just a comment, recreation is very expensive.
It's very expensive.
For every county.
Yes.
For all counties.
It's worth every cent of it.
And we are being best in our kids and those programs because it's a worthy investment, but it is very expensive. And I know the ball field is going to be very expensive, more than just the ball field itself.
Well, the reason we wanted to do ball, the reason we wanted to do ball field was to cut it down one where the old Snow Hill School Junior High was because it's dilapidated. It's in bad shape.
I understand that, I do understand that. I'm just, I was gonna say one, I said, the parking is going to be an issue also. For the new ball fields, and it attracts, our ball field's attracting an awful lot of traffic, a whole lot of people.
Yes, sir.
And so their parking.
Yeah, they come in from other counties, they go eat here. It was good revenues.
I do, I.
But it still costs a lot.
I agree with that, but it's more than just building the ball field, so I'm saying parking's going to be an issue too, I think.
But it does on the paper, it says.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, I know that.
I believe it's three or more cents on your mileage or your tax.
Yeah, this past year, the expenses over revenues is about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, expenses of revenues.
I agree with what you're saying.
Look at this, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I agree with, I know it brings in a lot of money to the county too.
Yeah, yeah, it's not negative comment.
You know, we had plenty of ball fields and everybody wanted everything up there in Snow Hill, so they closed more, they closed looking and moved everything to Snow Hill. So now all the businesses in Snow Hill get the cake and nowhere else does.
Okay, we move on to, this is the farmer's market, five fourteen. You know, I did not, this one says per Commissioner Jones' request.
Yeah.
There was one in here, I think we had five fourteen here twice. And the one that said Commissioner Jones lights.
Yeah.
Say.
It's been covered.
That is for lighting at the farmer's market. That's right, that's for lighting at the farmer's market to lighten up in the evening. It's kind of out there at the edge of town and to give it some more security. It allows the cameras that we have installed there to monitor and view. But anyways, that was a little funny, I thought I'd share that. Okay, so that is the general fund outside of Senior Center, Health and DSS, okay? Are there any questions before we enter those three departments? Okay, let's do it. So we have eleven one seventy one is DSS revenue, okay? DSS proposes a, just under two point six million in revenue, okay? So let's move on to DSS expense. I believe I budgeted their salaries and benefits at eighty-six percent this year. Last year I budgeted at eighty-eight percent, okay? There's a lot of lapped salary and I anticipate the same based on hybrid. Yes, sir.
Explain that you said a few budgets, DSS salaries at eighty-six percent, last year eighty-eight percent increase salary.
Yeah, salaries and benefits. I've actually done that for many departments based on how many employees we're trying to hire and based on the trend of hiring employees. It's a, it's a very.
How many others do you have?
Nine.
Yeah, someone said close to ten, yeah.
Nine or ten. And then we've also got four new employees. It would be my opinion that those new employees will be transfers from other positions within your department that are not really reducing the number of vacancies, but are just going to be transfers or something of that nature. Would you agree right now?
Possibly, I would definitely make the supervisor position would definitely be a transfer, someone in house when we move up, yes.
So that's, that's not reducing the vacancies, it's an increased vacancy. And it is a very challenging department to, to hire. It's a lot of respect for those folks.
Does state reverse Medicaid, George?
Uh, yes, at the same rate as fifteen seventy one allows.
Yes, we got, I signed something, yes, well, last week, and I think it was supposed to be sent to the county manager to look at.
Do you have news from Raleigh Forest, Derek?
I don't go to Raleigh to this month.
Oh, okay. So.
We go to Raleigh, we go to Raleigh this week, but not for that. But we have forty-three percent vacancies, someone else. Across the state.
Wait, what?
Across the state. Forty-three percent.
It's across state.
Forty-three percent vacancies.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I want you to know, Derek, if you had questions about the budgeting of reduced salaries and benefits, it is a way that the county, it's a, it's a strategic attempt at accurately budgeting or forecasting what we think will take place based on current hiring and application percentages. And so we do not lock money up that is unused. We don't want to appropriate funds in the department that we don't think are going to be used. We'd rather reappropriate those funds somewhere where they can be an annual immediate benefit, immediate benefit in the annual year to the county. We've really gotten away from that in my time here. It's a very efficient form of budget. Have you had any trouble with the budgets for salaries and benefits? I've done it in other departments too, but this year the only department is DSS. Okay. So in. You will notice some slight decreases from the request to the recommend in the DSS. And basing that on trend. Trend is, you know, what we have done in the immediate past. I'll also make note, if there are shortages, I take responsibility. We will do an amendment to give the department the funds they need to operate. Okay. Questions in DSS, it's a very large department, our largest, very large budget. Okay, so when we complete DSS, we move into, well, looks like our next one is going to jump us ahead to Senior Center. Five eight, uh, five eighty is Senior Center. We must have got. The.
Where's everyone's deals?
That's right, and it looks like. Yep, five twenty-one is expenditure for DSS.
They're spending.
That's right. So that's many pages. When you get to eleven five.
That breaks it down into different departments.
That's.
Different sections of the DSS.
When you get to eleven five eighty, that's going to be the Senior Center. Okay, and Senior Center. Ms. Sharon, I did not move the request to the recommend, it is the recommend. Hers, hers was very efficient. It followed the trends of previous fiscal years. She's, she does very well in managing out the different departments and utilizing all funding sources available for staff and whatnot. The last one's five ninety-seven ship. She did take the ship department and duties. I believe that came from extension when Chanel. Well, I've got a little confusion here. It looks like.
It is.
It looks like the health department was skipped, but revenues presented from the health department are, they were untouched. The expenditure from the health department, there was one change. The change came in the board pay, the board pay was requested to be increased. I, I put it back in at what it currently is. That we are, we are directional increases. But beyond that, the budget is, the health department's budget is exactly what was given. Both of the budgets, DSS and Health, if you recall, included the vehicle. Part of the vehicle replacement plan initiative to improve it within eight years. So once you get the vehicles this year, in eight years replace it.
Starting for the health or DSS, that should be the same.
I, they're not. Is that what you want me to do?
What is, what's the buy for DSS goal?
I believe it's twenty. I'm sorry, DSS, I was looking at joy. Health is twenty.
Twenty dollars for the embers and twenty-five dollars for the chair.
And DSS is thirty.
And thirty-five for the chair.
Yeah, I can, I can line those up and obviously we go up, so it's going to be thirty-five and thirty.
Yeah, I was doing that.
Can you make note of that, Kathy? Okay, that offset will come from contingency located in eleven four eleven. It will, the budget will remain the same. It will just be two departments offsetting expenditures, okay?
We'll have a couple things that need to be corrected in line.
Were there mistakes? Okay. Kathy, where is the health budget?
If you go back, it's back in your section.
Yeah.
I don't know what page it is, but it's. Go back.
There's somebody who's thirty.
Walker.
Okay.
Five forty-one, page, yeah. Page thirty-one, five forty-one, I believe.
What do you, what was, is it typo?
On page thirty-three.
Okay.
If you look under eleven five forty-seven.
Yeah.
Our request, when I compared it to what we submitted to you on our spreadsheet.
Yeah.
What we requested was twenty-five thirty-four, so those numbers were just transposed.
We can just leave it because it's nine dollars in your favor.
I understand, I'm just explaining.
Somewhere else, thank you.
So that part, and then just one more on page, well, on page thirty-four.
Yeah.
It's just a dollar, but we requested seventeen forty-three and it was put in seventeen forty-two under eleven five forty-eight.
Yeah, we've got a place to get that dollar from, so.
Okay, and then. On page forty-three. On item eleven five sixty-eight. Our request was zero dollars because that's a grant that we have not received yet. So the request should be zero dollars and recommended zero dollars.
Okay, where, where was that again, please?
Eleven five sixty-eight on page forty-three.
Okay.
It's the Wakeless Grant we get from BID.
Okay.
We have not, we didn't request any money in that bottom.
Did you make note of that, Kathy? If you make note of it, I'll make the correction in the budget and that will just increase the contingency to zero out that account, okay? Thank you, Joy. That is our general fund. Other questions, comments?
It's good.
Thank you. It is a good time for a break, if anyone needs a break, before we jump into our water, sewer, public works and transportation departments. All right. All right. So, what's the difference with this and the ones we already had? Mine didn't have the water sewer.
Mine didn't either, so I don't know if yours had it or not, but.
Mine does.
Well, you got lucky to. Okay, so our revenues for Fund Sixty-One are on the screen. If you recall, there is a, an increase in water recommended to cover expense. Revenues that we forecast are here. I will say that there has been an, uh, a more efficient use of water by the consumers. Uh, that's not just in Green County, but that's, that's everywhere. I think as things get more expensive, people become more, uh, more efficient. Um, that's something we've already noticed and we expect again. We move down to, are there questions on the revenues before I move on?
Kathy, you said the increase, you said the increase.
Um, the, the increase is going to be in your, uh, budget. And the increase in the water, Mr. James T., generally in the past, I had just done a flat increase. And I believe I recommended, or I was going to do eight percent or eight and a half percent, based on two increases from GUC. Um.
Six percent of the rest.
Um, yes. I asked the engineers their opinion based on local rates. And actually, I'm glad you asked that, I'm going to read it, because what they said, I thought that was very helpful. And, uh, when it comes to the water, the water rate evaluation. Mr. DeHaven referenced the subject, UVA Utilities Commission, GUC, has advised an increase in the bulk water sales cost. Green County faces a corresponding increase in water purchase costs along with normal operating expense increases resulting from observed increases in wholesale costs of goods and services. Inflation, okay? The following is a history of GUC water sales costs compared to Green County's adopted bulk rate. So, a little chart in here, you can't see it. But, um, Green County has not increased bulk rate charge since twenty eighteen nineteen. Rate increases have not been needed through efficient and effective management of utility and the following supporting factors. Um, these are supporting factors, increasing, um, users was a big piece of it. Um, it's noted, Green County was not notified of a twenty-two, twenty-three GUC wholesale increase until after adoption of budget. If you remember, I've talked to some of you about that, we adopted, I believe, June sixth, June seventh, they let us know. They're not helped. We were able to absorb it, but that's part of the increase recommended this year. With the current annual water purchase from GUC of two hundred and thirty million gallons, the proposed GUC wholesale rate increase results in additional cost. Um, county hasn't been able to absorb the impact of the wholesale rate increase in the past. With the impact of inflation, it's recommended that county consider water rate increases for twenty-three, twenty-four to maintain your recent history of operating budgets with a year-end surplus, not pointing in the red, okay? The impact was on the percentage of water used by the different, um, classes, residential, commercial, institutional, and bulk. Um, uh, in fiscal year twenty-two, the county's utility fund budget shows final water sales were below the adopted budget. People became more efficient, as I mentioned. Decreased sales revenues are attributed to residential, uh, reduced residential water use. Even with lower sales revenue and failure by GUC Farmville to notify the county of last year's wholesale rate increase, the county's utility fund continued to operate at surplus, and you can thank Mr. David Jones. He kept his department in line with their expenditures. Um, and he also realized that the sales were coming in lower and reduced his expenditures likewise. Um, there is a chart provided from the engineer. I can print this for anyone who'd like to see it on his recommendation, which I am recommending, for the different structures' current and proposed cost increase. It was made so that, uh, the bulk is going to be carried by the prisons. Bulk increases to prisons and commercial, not residential, um, not our. I, I always think of, uh, our seniors, our elderly people who are on fixed incomes, so they, oh, you're all right. So they are not, um, more adversely affected than their, um, fixed income allows. Okay, so, basically above, the following table compares current average monthly rate to proposed changes. So there's also the proposed increase to residents, Mr. James T., is six point eight nine percent. The proposed increase to commercial is eight point eight seven. The proposed increase to institutional is eight point three. And the proposed, uh, increase to bulk is eight point eight, okay? So in the above table, bulk charges are based on annual revenue. The lower impact on residential users is due to the low monthly water use under that category. The increase shows, the increases show, um, an annual revenue of approximately a hundred and seventy-seven K. So, that increased revenue can offset the increased expense that we are having to pay to GUC for our ultimate water and for the CPI, the increased cost of doing business. It is acknowledged that rate increases are difficult, but county's ability to maintain rates for the past five years is impressive. The proposed increases are driven by the increased wholesale water purchase costs from GUC, for which you have no control. It's not in your control. We are responsive in this. Are there questions on any of that? So, what Kathy just provided you was the, what I was showing you on the screen, it's the, um, water sewer, um, explanation pages.
What's, what's the difference with this and the ones we already had?
Um. Mine didn't have the water sewer.
Mine didn't either, so I don't know if yours had it or not, but.
Mine does.
Well, you got lucky to. So, we all have the same information.
Okay. Maybe mine got a short part of the way, but I'm looking at it.
You're on the story, don't trust the copier.
Okay, great. So, as you look through the revenues, the increase from the proposed rate adjustments are included. And as we move to the expense, you'll see, correspondingly, the increase from purchase of water is included too. So. Is that thousand?
No.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a rate sheet in front of me. Okay, so we'll move to our water expenses, then if there are no questions on the revenue. Um, David's staff is included, it's salaries and benefits. Um, and then, his explanations for his expenses are included. I reviewed this very closely, and there are slight changes. The overall total isn't changed, it's just to make the business model, um, work most efficiently and effectively, in my opinion, with the trend. Clearly, if there's anything that was cut that needs to be replaced, we will replace it. If there's anything added that is not used, we could offset whatever is needed with what is, uh, remaining in surplus.
I hate to ask, what's P D G E's?
Postage.
Postage.
Are there questions? In water, I believe there are two trucks recommended and one truck in sewer is recommended. No, I'm sorry, there are two trucks in water, none in sewer.
New system, did they put in a new system yet?
The AMI?
Right.
No, we are working with Mueller to update our system, as Mr. Richmore has updated you at commission meeting, pre-commission meetings ago, I believe. That is a, they're long processes. I will note that we are finishing this state of project, um, that is in the short rows. And then, um, I think they're going to jump very heavy on the quoting conversion. Um, this project's had been lingering, but McDavid's getting cleaned up. Oh, speaking of David, HMGP, I hope we have HMGP closed out by end of current fiscal year. That's Mr. Beckton and Ward.
Yeah.
So, took a while, but they, they have received their due.
And by the way, did life pass away?
I was not aware of that. What were your questions in water?
Where we at on the building?
The water building. Um, I have the plans in my office, Tony Bear has staked it out, and it should be, I would say, Christmas. Let me text Tony to be sure on that.
Speaking of the building, what's, um, the building that the armory going to go through, there is landfill.
Say it again?
The, the junk building, that the armory, where they're going to be used for the landfill, storage.
Um, David.
It all looking real straight and new.
Um, yeah, well, they all were able to have them moved. Um, they were moved at a very reasonable cost, and David is always in need of more indoor contained storage. Those buildings will work very well for what his use of them will be. And in its place at the armory, um, we did some financial engineering, moved some monies around to make work a new twenty-four by forty building that can be constructed, um, in the back left corner of that property for the storage needs of that building. So, uh, I think that'll look very good, it'll look very nice, intact. Um, it's my opinion, everybody wins, uh, with that setup. Okay, under, um, would you like me to read through the sewer proposal? Let's see. Mr. DeHaven, reference the subject that the town, that the town Farmville has advised an increase in their bulk water sales cost. Sewer, I'm sorry, sales cost. Projected bulk increases five percent. Green County faces expense in normal operating costs resulting from increase in wholesale costs of goods and services. Green County has not had increased sewer rates over the past two years. Rate increases have not been needed to be effective management of utility. Um, primary sewer customers are more correctional and the high schools. Sanitary sewer infrastructure's been installed without the debt service. Without debt service, the ones that's related to operational costs, so. Existing sewer customers base is primarily non-residential. Current residential customers are those residing in Cutter Creek, where it's pumped to Kingston. The home's located along ninety-one corridor, uh, behind the Speedway.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we call that Sewer District One. Depending impact of rate increases from Farmville and ongoing inflation, it's recommended that county consider sewer rate increases for twenty-three, twenty-four to maintain your recent history of operating budgets in a flat. Evaluating rate increases, it's good to identify the primary consumers. A large majority of sewer customers are the prisons, so. Their recommendation is the same concept as the water, where it hits the prisons rather than the residences. So, uh, basically above, the impact will be greater on the prison, who is a large volume voice water customer. Residents will see an approximate six percent rate increase, and the prison, an eight percent rate increase, which will add an additional revenue of approximately sixty-nine thousand dollars. Um, again, it's acknowledged that rate increases are difficult. County's ability to maintain affordable rates is impressive. The proposed increases are driven by the increased wholesale purchase cost from Farmville, for which you have no control. So we're passing along increases that we have no control of. Um, as it becomes more expensive for us to purchase, um, um, capacity, we pass that on to those users. So, I, I think that is a great reason to raise rates, not because of anything but need. Are there questions in water, sewer, revenues or expenditures? Okay, okay. Have I argued with the necessary information to explain to your constituents the need for the increases? And they are just being passed on from who are charged.
They are generally increased.
Yes, sir. I want to make sure that you are just able to explain that to those who are affected, that's all. Okay. Well, I can, with no question, we'll move on then to landfill.
What's that?
Let me find that word. Kathy just handed you something.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. It's going to be sixty-two, and then also.
Sixty-eight also, didn't it?
Yes, um, sixty-two on your, it's Fund Sixty-Two in your Excel sheets, and it's page sixty-eight.
Yeah.
In the units sheets.
Actually, let me get that back here. Sixty-two starts right. There. Ah, it's in there. You said page sixty-eight in units.
Page sixty-eight in units.
Yeah.
That's your expenditures. They go through for landfill. And when she hands you these sheets that look like this, this is the arrival and expenditure. Is everybody set? You good, Derek?
I'm good.
Okay.
Mine, mine was in there already.
Oh, really good.
Mine was in there also.
You've all had it sometimes.
Okay. Is everybody good to look through landfill? So this is a very difficult budget, okay? The, the level of service, the amount of different things that are offered at that landfill are very expensive. Um, it was hit really hard this year with increases from various providers, um, that he called it origins, which works. And it, it's just a very difficult budget to balance based on our current fee structure. I know that we have tried to keep fees, uh, reasonable. Um, but as I mentioned before, in conversation with counties around us, it's unreasonable. it's unreasonable to think that we can balance a budget with less fees per household, per user than those around us and have success over time, to have sustainability. Which is the reason for the requested increase. So with the increase, I believe if I'm not mistaken, the $5 availability fee increase and the $5 user fee increase, $10 total that appears on people's tax bill was $64,000. Which is added into your solid waste fees, okay? Other questions? Not really a whole lot to look at in landfill revenues.
Questions?
Yes.
On landfill closure costs? Recommended 30?
Yep. It goes from actuaries. I don't have to pull it on. I don't know. I do know that that fund.
We start starting putting this back.
Yeah.
Yeah. You put it back for several years.
Right.
Required to.
Yes. The amount of money required to close the landfill down is in the, it's probably like four or five million, so.
Yeah, it's more and more people, it's gone up.
It is, it is in, it is a very large number. And we're not the only ones faced with this, everyone who has a landfill is faced with this too. The increase in restrictions, the increase in rules and requirements. We can talk about that in more detail. Yes.
How many scrap tires?
Yeah. Okay, we've talked here, we've moved into the scrap tire disposal fee. The revenue then is, the program doesn't exist anymore. If you'll notice it in the budgets and the actuals, it's just not there anymore. At one time, we did receive revenue for that. It still is a service we provide at an expense, but we don't receive revenue for it. There's no offset. And that goes back to what I was saying about the, the cost of performing the services continues to go up. The resources for performing those sources continues to go down.
Water center, when we contract that with?
Water center?
Professional services, I would, I hear you're engineering for the management of the water center.
Uh, to make sure that the, what's being drained, I think we use, it's the water that's actually in the landfill to make sure it's not polluting. Contaminating, wonderful, thank you. And we use, it's an engineering firm out of Wilson. Wilson, it's.
I saw it there. Yeah, do it once a month, once a year?
I don't know the frequency, everyone knows the frequency. Is it? Is it green engineering? It's green engineering. It is, it's not McDavid.
Can I have it made it out?
Sure, I can get it made.
Check on it.
Okay.
I will keep it in house, I'll put it home.
I think we. I think we contracted out because we don't have anyone who's capable of doing it in-house. I think that would require certain staff. Basically, like I said, this is the most challenging budget to balance. The revenues are going away, the expenses continue to add up, I can't stress that enough. The increase proposed allows us to balance out and it allows the expenditures and revenues to meet. It's just going to keep getting harder though. If there are no more questions in landfill, then we can move on to transportation. Transportation is a fun budget to balance because the resources. Fund 65.
65?
Yep. The resources are generally state and federal. There is some county input. But Misty has run a very efficient department. So that we can maximize those monies received for the services provided. Is everyone there? Other revenues are comparable to last year, increase in the Medicaid fees, decrease in DOT administration grant. A lot of that's timing. The expenses, staffing. This, this department utilizes a lot more part-time staff than others. It is because the hours of operation vary early morning till evening. I don't think we do after, later in the evening, isn't that right, Misty? I was going to say serious. So expenses, I know that, I think there's a vehicle in here for capital outlay. And then is it cameras?
Yeah.
Cameras improvements on the vehicles.
Is that monitored to accept the location?
Yes. Another project we're working on, a little bit of a digression, that funding was received, Skip 129 to improve that field, that fenced-in part of the field. It's actually done a lot slower than I initially anticipated, but progress is being made. I believe trenching for electric lines has been done. Poles moved by DOT, they, I mean, they started off the project by holding this up.
That's you.
DOT. Yes. I feel some Pitt and Green. Right, so anyways, we had the gate, we were set up with some roadblocks, but we moved past and through them. I think right now P and P is out there spreading rock. Were they out there this morning? Well, they should be at some point today, spreading rock. And asphalt, I'm hoping by the end of the month, we can have a parking lot. We'll assess it, if we need a stripe, we'll have it striped. The building that I mentioned earlier will go up, should take about a week to 10 days, let's say. So maybe give it two weeks and 20 days, I don't know. Nothing happens as fast as people anticipate anymore. But we should have a very nice, secure facility for that department. I'm very excited for that. I think it kind of puts a nice little ribbon or bow, if you will, on that, on that property. And it's just our job to maintain it. Keep it nice, keep it functional, operational, perform service there on. Yeah, this is the complete opposite of the landfill budget. This is a fun budget because, you know, the resources aren't there, like I said. Other questions? That is the three enterprises, okay? So that is the budget. Budget total this year, I believe it's a little bit more than in years past. I guess it was 35 mil. But I think it's an efficient budget. For the most part, the department has were very conscientious, gave great effort in their budget requests, which made my job a little bit easier. A lot of thank to those guys. We were able to balance budget without any fund, balance appropriated or retain earnings in any department, which is wonderful. I do not know how long that will actually last, you know, at some point, we will have to balance against the house. But hopefully, services provided will enable a revenue stream that can allow us to remain in the black rather than go in the red.
I talked to Shane about the Happy Jack vouchers.
Yeah.
He has not heard of anything being discontinued, but he's supposed to go this week when he gets a check to go pick up more Happy Jack vouchers and he'll check into it then, so.
I hadn't heard of it myself, so that is a little bit of a conflicting, you know, message or conflicting information. Wait to the bottom of it. That is a.
Happy Jack vouchers?
Yeah, we, we really benefit from those, those vouchers. Really reduce the cost of that spay neuter and keep our costs down. That is a cost we will have to, we will have to increase our costs to pass that along, much like the water, sewer, landfill. But that is, that's what happened. Now, we got everybody lunch, but we actually flew through that. So I don't want to say you have to stick around for lunch, but you are welcome to. The response didn't justify the. Ray's question was about Fort Run Rescue. Well, there was a PMS, what do I, what do you call it here? It was cold. In years past. Yes, in years past, we had given $2,500 per truck of the volunteer service units that provided the service. For the rate of their response being less than 10%, I want to say it was near 5%. I couldn't justify including it. I believe two years ago, we said we would monitor the latest contract. Those contracts will reflect that change. As mentioned before, June 5th, 10 a.m., public hearing. I'm not sure we. You better put that in your phone, 10 a.m. I'm not sure.
We smoked a cigarette, watched a long war.
I'm not sure we formally.
I'll call you.
I'm not sure we formally announced that. Chairman, you would announce that there will be a public hearing.
She said we did.
Okay, we did. You watch?
I, I haven't watched.
I haven't watched, but.
I know we talked about it, but I can't remember if we said.
If we did not say we will have a public hearing for the budget at 10 a.m. on June 5th.
At 3:12, Southeast 6th Street.
At the Operations Center, the Commissions Room.
Thank you. It's projected to be advertised the 27th. That's right, which will honor the no less than 10 days, no more than, I think it's 3rd honestly. But no less than 10 days, so that's the proper advertisement so that Monday, June 5th, if everyone's still confident in the budget, it can be approved and staff can move towards end of year functions and responsibilities at that time.
We got nothing to wait to come in, come down in the official room.
Don't put in a spotlight that, Jerry.
The Tomcat is back.
Um, he is not. He is not.
Is he going, he was going to get on the fire department, he wanted to borrow a fire department.
He did do more, uh, he did a middle swamp fire department, which is the service district of Maury.
It was a nice facility, yeah. On the outside.
I've been inside, it is, it's a nice inside.
You know that train, when we went to Fayetteville that night, that was a nice train facility. Yeah, I made everything really nice.
I guess I, where you just described that.
That was a nice training facility. And I went out and smoked and the guy carried me in there and said, "Fire truck's in there." It was a nice training facility. They even had a pucker there to show you how to do the pucker. Cause he went in there, we were trying to show what we having for lunch.